I pledge allegiance, I'll just get going. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. That's cool. Over to Teever. All right, so has the board had a chance to review the amended, amended minutes?
The double amended?
The double amended minutes in the June 26th meeting. I'll offer a motion to accept the amended, amended minutes. Any questions?
No, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, first item on our regular agenda, Highland Mills Group Center. Schedule the public hearing for September 18th, 2024. I'll offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for the Highland Mills Group Center on September 18th, 2024. Any questions? All in favor? All right, well, that's, this is, that was the quickest item of the night. Klein, ARB, 16 Country Hollow Road. Review and discuss draft resolution for ARB and Ridge Preservation for proposed 1,352 square foot addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Said property is located at 16 Country Hollow in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Sections 2, 4, 7, Block 5, Lot 8. The board did ask for more time for this one to go out and take a look at the site and take a look at the house and review the material. I hope everybody has had a chance to do that since then, and now we just have to make a decision on what the board's feelings are with the project. I will, if you want me to start, I'll start.
You could start, sir.
So, when you look at the 300, 300 square feet, the 300-foot radius around the tip homes that are built in that community, I think in size, styling, shape, I think the house itself, in its current form of what's being proposed in front of us, is just out of character.
100%.
For the neighborhood, so I don't feel it is a good fit and blends into the community and character of the neighborhood as being proposed.
No, I don't either.
I concur.
Agreed.
So I'll put the motion for denial.
So yes, so for resolution of disapproval for this application, your findings would be...
Sorry.
Your resolution would be, now therefore the planning board, after your facts and findings, now therefore the planning board resolves to disapprove this application. The grounds for the disapproval have been set forth above in the noted findings and by various comments of the planning board and its consultants and evidence in the meeting minutes and memorandum also referenced above, which comments and findings are incorporated herein by reference as though fully set forth at length herein. This shall constitute the decision in action of the board, and I will confirm that those findings do state that you don't believe it is consistent with character really.
So I'll offer a motion to accept the, to, Graham, Grant?
Well, I'd...
Adopt the resolution of disapproval.
I second that motion.
Questions? It's not, this was an action item for us tonight. All right, so, sorry, second question?
No.
Favor?
Aye.
All right. Chapote, ARB signage. Review of documents submitted for ARB for proposed additional exterior signage located in Building 3 with the shops at Woodbury Shopping Center. Said property is located at the intersection of Losi Lane and Route 32 in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 225, Block 1, Lot 34.1, 34.22, and 75. I don't see Mr., are they not coming? Mr. Anderson?
Probably just because they lost.
Yeah, okay, so I'll pull it up, just in case this is, so, they came back from the ZBA. You want to actually just go ahead, Natalie?
Sure. Okay. So, this application, the applicant was last before you in February, at which time you referred them to the ZBA for two wall signs where one is permitted by code. They received their variance on June 12th. The only technical comment that we have left on the application is that they should include a note on their plan that confirms compliance with the code requirements for sign illumination. The note should specify that the signs will be extinguished at or before midnight each day, and otherwise, I know Kelly has prepared a resolution for the board to consider this evening. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments for Natalie? Okay, so again, just, it's just going to be the same sign that's already on the front of the building, they're going to be putting on the second face of that.
I have no issue with it.
Yeah, I think Aspen Dental has one already, has a second sign, so.
They do, they got it on both sides.
Yeah, sorry, I did not download the resolution, give me one second.
I thought you were going to say, Kelly, do you want to read the conditions?
Since he hasn't downloaded it.
No, I didn't download it, that's what I'm...
She's asking.
Do you have it, Kelly, up? Because I don't have it in front of me.
I do.
Thank you, sorry.
The beginning of a precedent.
No, no, I normally, I normally download them and put them in the file before the meeting, I don't know why I didn't do it tonight.
I provided the board with a draft resolution, there are four specific conditions to that. The first is all conditions of prior approvals in connection with this property shall continue to be in full force and effect, and this resolution does not supersede or otherwise modify such prior approvals and conditions accepted specifically set forth in this resolution. Number two, no building permit shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural renderings submitted to and approved by the Architectural Review Board as part of this approval, nor shall any certificate of occupancy issued for any structures constructed except in conformance with such renderings. Any deviation from such renderings will require further planning board review. Number three, prior to the signing of the renderings, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated July 19th, 2024 to the satisfaction of the village engineer. And number four, the applicant shall comply with the conditions contained within the June 12th, 2024 decision of the Village of Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals.
I just, see, and just to prove to everybody, I do actually have it.
He's like, how fast can you read?
I just didn't have it on my, downloaded it in a folder. So I will offer a motion to accept the resolution of approval as beautifully read by Attorney Norton.
I will second that.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving along. Old Mine of Orange County. Review and discuss revised plans and materials for Ridge Preservation and ARB for proposed single-family dwelling located on Skyline Drive in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 208, Block 1, Lot 3.31 and 21. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Michael Morgante, project engineer for this application. It's been a few months, four to be exact, since we've submitted. We had tried with our last submittal to listen to some of the comments we received, both from the public and from the board, and we attempted to make some changes to the plans to address some of those comments and issues. We did receive the comment letter from Natalie. I may have a question or two on the comment letter, but we don't take any exception to the comments. I think we probably need to just bring up the plans and maybe go through the board, with the board, any issues or concerns you may still have based on whatever was submitted. I mean, that's probably a good place to, to begin, unless you'd like to go through the comments from Natalie first.
We'll go Natalie first, and then we'll go to your plans. Go ahead.
Okay, so, just a little bit of a recap, the last appearance before the board was the public hearing, at which time several members of the public spoke regarding concerns on drainage, visual impacts, and conflicts with existing features. Some of the things were the driveway to the adjacent lot, and I think the utility pole, which I think is resolved now. In an attempt to address the concerns of the public, like Mike was saying, they've modified their plan, including they shifted the location of the home south on the lot, which requires the installation of a large retaining wall at the property line. The shift could preserve some of the existing tree cover between 30 Summit Drive, which is the home in front. We've noted in our memo that the retaining wall construction in proximity to the property line is at variance with the requirements of the code, but we understand that the applicant will be able to adjust the plan so that the wall would comply. So that comment, I think, is resolved, will be resolved on a future submission. We do believe that revised and complying plans should be reviewed by the board prior to any action that you take, but I also understand that this application is stayed by the moratorium. As raised during the public hearing, the applicant's driveway, while located in the right-of-way, it does impede the existing access to 28 Elmwood Drive, which is the property to the north plan west. So you can kind of see where the conflict is on the plan on the screen that Chris has up. So we've kind of indicated in our memo a number of times that the applicant should work with the neighbor to ensure that adequate access to that property is maintained, and we recommend that the board discuss that with the applicant, and if needed, get advice from Kelly as to whether a legal agreement or document would be needed to effectuate that. We've also noted that the home has an ornate front entrance, but there's no sidewalk proposed or walkway, so we assume that will be added to the site plan. That's kind of a minor comment. We've asked for the applicant to confirm compliance with the code requirements for the building height. I think the code has a maximum of 35, which I think they do comply, but there are some discrepancies, maybe in what's listed in the bulk table and shown on the plan. The applicant, or the application was referred to ESOS. The fire department had no concerns about the length and the grade of the driveway, but they did ask for the applicant to confirm that the ladder truck could maneuver the driveway, so that should be confirmed on a turning movement plan. The applicant's plan shows revisions to the proposed driveway culvert from prior submissions, as well as some grading in that area, and again, I think that was an effort to address some concerns of the public at the last meeting. We've recommended that revised calculations be submitted to confirm that the culvert will function as intended, and also we've raised for the board to consider that perhaps the applicant could improve the swale that's directly in front of where the building is proposed, you know, as far as they would be willing essentially to capture the runoff in that area that could occur from the proposed development and not impact the properties As part of the Ridge Preservation Review, the board is authorized to require supplemental plantings to offset trees that are removed during the development. We recommend you consider whether that is appropriate for this application. We recommend the applicant review and revise the materials to reflect the size of the home consistently. Information on comparison properties was provided, but it may be easier to review the information in a tabular format, particularly related to the building footprint and gross floor area. The ARB form should list the materials and colors of the deck and the shutters and the molding between the bay windows, and that's all I have, as if it's not enough, sorry.
Questions for Natalie?
If you don't mind, because I wasn't here when you did this last, is this lot like landlocked or something? Is this driveway going through someone else's property?
It, do you want to talk about, okay. Well, it doesn't go through somebody else's property, actually, believe it or not, the right-of-way extends into, can I point?
Yep. I know, I was thinking about that.
All right.
So, we actually do have the access to the existing road, this property's driveway is also the right-of-way almost entirely, so that's the conflict that I was describing.
Yeah, just, I couldn't figure out, they look like they're like almost sharing a driveway at one point.
And that will be what it is now, right, as proposed.
A shared driveway?
Well, it's not shared, it's shared because of the way the two intersect, but there's no, like, legal agreement because it's on, it's in the right-of-way, you know, but what I'm suggesting is that this applicant should ensure that the existing homeowner has access to their property in a suitable form, and however, that needs to be effectuated legally, you know, and considered by the board, should be worked out now, if that makes sense.
For what it's worth, the applicant takes no exception to working anything out with the board as it relates to the driveway. There's the potential for us to help pave the neighboring driveway as well. We can work that out with the board. Again, the applicant is well aware and takes no exception to making sure that there's access to the neighboring property and potentially even helping them improve it.
Has there been any communication with the neighbor?
I'm trying to get an approval right now. We'll be glad to communicate with the neighbor and the board, but I don't have anything to communicate right now, because we don't have an approval.
Fair enough.
Second question, is that on the plan, again, forgive me, because I wasn't part of the first hearing, is that a existing house that outline right there on the right-hand side?
Is here?
Yes. That's a good, so then this house is going to be in someone's backyard, just about?
Yes, that's come up.
Well, they shifted it so it's not directly behind the house. When it was first proposed, it was much further, I think Chris had the plans up to the old plans for a minute, and it showed it further to the right, so it was overlooking, so the applicant heard from the public and this board and made an attempt to shift it so it's not directly available.
And this, again, for my edification, what's the reasoning putting it so deep on the property?
What's the reasoning?
For putting it so deep down the property instead of up?
I believe the topography back there.
No, it's a front yard setback issue.
The setbacks, right, yeah.
I had actually asked the building inspector and Kelly to review whether or not the front yard could be taken from the property line that is closer to the road as opposed to the one that's back here on the flag portion of the lot, but unfortunately, the code apparently reads that I can't do that. I could have moved this house significantly forward and would, I think everybody would be in agreement that it would be in a better situation if I could move it forward. However, because of a front yard setback, this is where I'm kind of shoehorned into providing the proposed, the proposed house.
Sorry, I thought you asked why wasn't it further back?
No, no, forward.
Further.
Why is it in someone's, why was it in someone's backyard? It looked like there's so much front, that's why, the way the drawing is.
Then it's because of the front yard setback.
Okay.
Could you get an exception from the zoning board for that?
You could apply for it, I just don't know that it would be granted.
We've had a pretty rainy summer.
We've already got something on record from the building inspector saying that they don't agree with it, so if I go to the ZBA, it would be, it would be a fruitless application.
We've had some significant rainfalls this summer. Will that culvert handle rainfalls?
So, so I...
Based on historical data.
No, no, so, so I provided an engineering analysis, so I looked at the entire watershed and the runoff from stormwater events that had generated it come to this portion of the site. I actually sized that culvert for 24 inches, and at 24 inches, on a 100-year storm, I sized it, which I'm not even required to, but I analyzed it for a 100-year storm. The flow depth within the pipe is one foot, slightly over one foot. In speaking with the applicant, they actually would have liked to increase this to 36 inches. So the culvert is oversized for this particular application for this single-family dwelling. We'll gladly look at the drainage ditch that is tributary to this culvert to see if that size is correct. I think one of the bigger issues with that particular drainage ditch is it just kind of needs to be cleaned out. That drainage ditch, when I was out there last and took some measurements, it was about two and a half, three feet by about like two and a half, three feet roughly. It's got a bigger area than our culvert does, so if my culvert can pass the water, that ditch should pass the water as well, but we'll look at it, and if that ditch needs to be resized while we're in construction, it's easy for us to take an excavator back there and shape it a little bit more, make it bigger, and without a doubt, absolutely clean out the ditch, which alone may help alleviate some of the flow conditions and backups that occur.
Who's going to be responsible for ongoing maintenance of the culvert?
I believe that drainage ditch is on our property, so I believe that the homeowner would be responsible. I'd have to double check that, I don't recall though off the top of my head.
Would the applicant have any, think about, right now it's like an earthen drainage ditch?
Correct.
Would they be willing to put a sort of stone or anything in it to keep it from, not collapse, but filling back?
Yeah, they're collapsing it.
Collapsing in on itself?
I'm not sure that, I mean, in my recollection, because I walked the whole thing, there was, there was no destabilization of the ditch. There were branches, leaves, twigs, rocks, the ditch needs to be cleaned out, that, I can tell needs to happen. I'm not sure that if we place anything on, inside that ditch, it's going to change the condition.
So it's really just more buildup from lack of maintenance and not the actual ditch?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Not being able to hold it up?
Correct, and again, we'll look at that, we'll take a look at that.
Because I know that's, you know, it's one of the, you know, concerns, as you heard, everybody was worried about the water and once it gets back there.
Sure, we heard, we heard the neighbors' complaints and concerns during the public hearing. Natalie did place that in our memo, we'll certainly take a look at it, and one of the things that we would do regardless is whether or not it's a condition as a resolution or a note on a plan is we'll, we'll clean that ditch out, even if it's properly sized according to the calculations I provide, we'll, we'll clean it, it needs to be maintained a little bit.
Can something also be put in there about ongoing maintenance of it?
I just wrote it down.
I saw her clicking.
Well, I felt like I got the head nod from the applicant's position, I said, okay.
Yeah, we've done it before on other projects.
I just want to, I just want to make sure that that...
That's just a one-time cleanup, but as in ongoing.
Perpetual, perpetual.
I just want to make sure that the instrument associated with that, that easement requires us to do it. As long as it's our requirement, then we'll gladly do it, that's it.
Well, I think most of it is on that property, so there may need to be a little bit of research, and I'm going to see what extends onto the board property. If they, if cleaning it out requires that they go onto that property, that...
That's a good point, can you zoom out a little bit? Because not all of that drainage easement is on our property, a good portion of it is, but not all of it. You have to zoom out, because actually you're going to have to go back to the site plan. You won't find the site plan, this is the ARB submittal?
Yeah.
That one right there.
Yeah, it should be that one, right? This is yours. OP5, we got to work on your naming convention, maybe the dates or something.
That's fine right there, or that's fine, you can go to the next sheet or whichever one you want, but you can see right here that there's a portion of the easement that falls off our property. The ditch may not fall off our property, so we may have the opportunity to shape it in this area here, but there's this small portion right there where the easement's not actually on our property.
The property is to the right of the board.
Gray?
Gray.
How much of the culvert is actually on the property, the other property?
This, see, this, this looks like this, this is the center line, right, of the culvert here?
So if you look at this label, if you look at this...
The dotted lines?
Yeah, if you look at this, yeah, that's, that's about right. If you look at these leaders right here, these labels, that's one edge of the easement, that's another edge of the easement, and a small portion of it, you see this dashed double dotted line right here? That's the actual center line of the ditch, and it, in this small area here, it falls off the property a little bit, so we would, we would have to be on a neighboring property.
Stay on one property?
Can I reshape it to stay on one property? Possibly.
Well, right, and I think that, from what I'm looking at, it looks like the swale probably over time has...
Wandered, yeah.
Wandered away from the easement area where the easement is actually centered on this applicant's property, so the swale should probably come back to the easement and be within that area.
Yeah, so we can, when we're, when we're, even if we're only re, even if we're only cleaning out the ditch, that small section, we can relocate it, that's fine.
I would be okay with that.
Yeah.
Relocate the ditch, go out to property.
If you go on the plain hill around the park, the park on the plain hill, when you come around under the railroad bridge, it's a highly, the park, the city highway environment has recently redone a drainage ditch, and they've put fairly large stone in there, that could be a model of something that would be more comfortable.
Yeah, so, the issue I have with, so you're talking about a, a public road that's routinely maintained versus a drainage easement in somebody's backyard. So if I line this with stone and we have maintenance later on, it needs to occur, it becomes that much more difficult, expensive, and cumbersome for the app, for that particular homeowner. An earthen ditch, if it's sized properly, I mean, the slope on this is not a terrible slope either, if it's designed properly, if it's, if it's an earthen ditch, it's much easier for maintenance and operation. I mean, I would much prefer to do that, not to mention lining that whole stone ditch, extremely expensive, it'd be extremely expensive, tens of thousands of dollars.
Other questions or feedback for the applicant? You said you had questions for Natalie, right? I think you wanted to?
Um, yeah, I mean, there was just one or two, I'm not sure it's anything we need to dwell on right now, let me just double check. We talked about the drainage ditch, so that was one situation. I think one of the comments on page four was that we hadn't included an unfinished basement and garage, I think, as a part of the board's consideration for gross floor area. But when you look online at Image Mate, all of those building square footages that I'm comparing to also don't include any garage or basement area as part of their gross floor area, so I feel it's an apples-to-apples comparison. If I add the basement and the garage floor, then I'm creating a disadvantageous position for us, because it looks like we're that much bigger than everybody else. That, that was my only question or concern.
So I think the board has seen comparisons in the past based on living area, so that is what you're talking about, Mike, I think, like the apples-to-apples, but the code does in the requirements ask the board to look at gross floor area, which would include those unfinished spaces and the building footprint, so, you know, one thing that you could do, Mike, is possibly add on the building footprint to each of those homes, and that would be considered what the foundation or the basement area would be, if that makes sense.
Or could it just be that much more simple if I include the basement and garage as like either a, like a notation, you follow what I'm saying?
Like a separate column?
Yeah, so that the board can see, okay, livable area is 2,000 square feet, but with the garage and the basement, it's 2,500.
Yep, I think that would, to me, that sounds reasonable, I'm not sure what the board's disposition would be.
Yeah, I think it'd be okay with that, too.
That's fine.
I'll be all right.
Pardon my scrolling.
I still think this house is proposed is dissimilar to the neighborhood.
Well, can we go through some of the other pictures that I have? Because we do have at least one or two other colonials that are either the same size or larger than this. You know, we've changed the house size, we've reduced the footprint as much as possible, we've put a garage under to try to minimize grading, I mean, we've, we've certainly made a lot of changes to this plan that I think are, have put us in a, in a much better direction. I think if you scroll down, there you go. So, I mean, again, if you look at 34 Elmwood, I mean, that's a, that's a raised ranch, but again, you know, similar kind of setup with a garage under. If you can scroll down a little bit more, you've got 16 Elmwood, scroll down a little bit more, that's the one right there, 17 Elmwood is essentially the same house we're proposing. It's going to be very similar. It's a, it's a standard colonial, it's about the same size as a footprint, it's got a garage under, if you can scroll down one more. Keep going. Again, you've got, you know, the raised ranch is, a lot of raised ranches with a garage under that are all close to 2,000 square feet, seven-seater, I think is even bigger footprint than us. It's a colonial style house, again, garage under, everything in this area has a garage under, whether it's a raised ranch colonial style or a straight colonial, and these houses that are, I just named at least three or four that are at least similar in size to us and are of the colonial style, so I don't see how it's dissimilar. That, that would suggest that there's nothing in the neighborhood like this.
So 16 Elmwood, it falls within the... So 16 Elmwood falls within the 300 feet?
Yeah, 16 Elmwood's very close to us.
Seven-seater, that's a lot similar to...
What's up?
A seven-seater, seven-seater is even bigger.
I mean, the other thing, too, to think about is that this will, whether you like it or not, be set back off the road, so the scale of it, the mass of it's going to be far away, it's not going to be like literally right next door to the other houses where you can really determine the difference in size, but we have two doors down a house that's bigger than this and is a colonial style house.
It's, it's, to me, this is one of those neighborhoods that wasn't like completely planned, like some of the other... It's, it's, to me, i- i- this is one of those neighborhoods that wasn't like completely planned, like some, the other applicant we just saw, where there was a dozen styles of houses for everybody to pick from. Here, you kinda, if you drive up there, you got a mishmash of every, you got, you got a mishmash of everything up there.
You do.
I, I don't really have.
I mean, if you ask me, this, this could increase property, neighboring property values as well. It'll be a little bit of a bigger house, may have some more value to it. Um, it'll improve the lot ultimately, um, so I, I don't see how it's dissimilar, I can say that. Not that I just pointed out at least three different houses that are nearby that are of a similar size and construction.
Compared to those two, yes, it looks dissimilar, but when you go out to the 300 foot.
Which is, which is what this board is, is tasked to do, we have to look at the 300 foot radius, that's what we've done for. Question with the, the retaining wall that's back here, is that just gonna be a concrete retaining wall, or?
So.
Would you maybe put some sort of a finish on it, so it doesn't?
Absolutely, that, that, that's without a question, we would, we would consider doing that. Um, you know, one of the things, I mean, it's something that if I move this house again slightly to the left as we're looking at it on the screen, if I can kinda keep it, if you can go back to my site plan for a second?
Yep.
Yeah, go back, go back, yeah, there you go, go back to the actual site plan page, so. If I can just line this up, right there, somewhere between here and there, I, I will. Oh, yeah, sure.
No, when you, when you move two seats down, you can't see the.
If, if I can, if I can move this dwelling somewhere in between this side yard right here and where it's currently located, that wall comes down significantly.
How did the wall comes down?
Correct, yeah, um, if I, and at the very least, if I can move it over, I could tier that wall. So I can make it two levels, we could put plantings in it, it would look real nice.
Yeah.
You wouldn't see the upper wall, you'd only see the bottom wall, and we can certainly put a fascia on that. The bottom wall, we might even be able to do a modular block. Right now, as it stands, it's a concrete wall, uh, it's the only way I could construct it. Um, so, I mean, it's something that um, we can work with the board to consider which way you would like to move it forward. I mean, but I would like to consider moving that house, I mean, so what I did for the board's consideration was I pushed it as far over as I practically could, that's like, that's the best I can do. That's actually three feet from the property line, I measured it actually on AutoCAD. Um, as it currently stands, I wanted to make sure we had a wide enough distance for the footing not to go over onto the neighboring property line.
If you're going over to the left a little bit, that wall decreases.
Correct.
Towards the blue house.
Yep, yeah, correct. If, if I, yeah, so.
Where you're right there back.
So you would, you would um.
Someone's.
You would, you would probably be more like someplace over here.
See a wall than have somebody in my backyard.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Then, that's my other question for Natalie as it relates to the code, because the minimum we have to maintain it is two feet.
Uh, no, it's two feet or half the height.
I saw the or, I didn't know if it was one or the other, or it's.
It's whichever is greater.
So that, so then that becomes an issue for us, cause we gotta go to the ZBA for that. Cause there's no way I can, right, there's no way I can build that wall um, eight and a half feet away from the property line without moving this house eight and a half feet, but I can certainly move the house eight and a half feet, and eight and a half feet might not be as much as everybody thinks on that plan. Do you follow what I'm saying to you? So if I move if I move this house over eight and a half feet, I have the distance I need from the easily, maybe not even, maybe more like five feet, because I'm already three foot, maybe I move it over five or six feet this way. Now I can move the wall that further distance, five feet that way, now I meet the requirement for the separation distance between the wall and the property line, and the wall height comes down as well.
What kind of distance would that give you?
I was gonna say, do we know what the distance from that, that corner?
To the neighboring?
To the, to the neighboring? So from that black dot there, if you draw a straight line down, right, do we know what that distance between there and there is now?
That's the front yard setback, right?
Yeah. No, no, I'm saying if he shifts the house, I'm trying to figure out.
He wants to know what this distance is right now.
Yeah.
If you shift the house.
Or at least from there to there. Um, can you go to a different sheet that's got a better scale, this is the cover sheet? I might be able to find something I could put my finger on, you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
At least a scale potentially, hold on a second, wait, keep going, yeah, no, keep going. Uh, scroll down just a little bit towards the top of the page, other way. What's, other way, yeah. So here's seven feet, so here's seven feet, so scroll down a little bit, whoop, so seven feet. That's how much I need to move it.
That's not that bad. And I'd, I'd be even less than, probably like five or six feet. So if I show it.
Yeah, on this side.
Yeah, so, so if you, cause, so if you go straight down.
So there's seven feet, right?
So then if you go to the corner of, the corner of that person's house there, the ward house.
I'm still ver- I'm still well far away from that.
You're not?
Yeah.
I can move this.
I thought it was a lot closer.
I can move this five, six, seven, maybe even eight feet, and it won't look much different than it does now, but it'll give us the space we need for the retaining wall. And it might even slightly make it a little, a few feet lower.
I'm okay with that. And what's the board make, what does the rest of the board think about that? We got, because we gotta give him direction on it, so.
I, I think that's a very reasonable compromise.
At the very least, by preparing the plan, you'll have an option.
Yeah.
You would say, no, we don't like it, come back to this one, but you would have something, an alternative to look at, and you may end up liking that.
So, so just so the board's aware, you're probably not gonna see something that's that much different than you see right now. That wall's probably still gonna be 14 feet tall or so. Uh, the difference is gonna be that I'm gonna not have to go to the ZBA. Um, we certainly can put some type of a fascia on that concrete retaining wall that the board would be pleased with. Uh, they have all kinds of stamp patterns nowadays, we can make.
They have patterns for tints.
We can make it look like something, yeah. Um, so, I mean, you're gonna have, it's not, it's not gonna look that, that much different than what you see right now, but it's gonna prevent us from having to go to the ZBA. Um, and I think it's going to meet the intent of uh, what the board would like to see.
What's that, you gentlemen?
Yeah.
It's better than the original application.
Oh, we've, we've been here for three years, four, four years now? Kinda.
You're not the longest yet.
No, but I don't wanna be.
We still got other people in front of you that'd be here longer.
I feel like, I feel like I'm going to be pretty soon.
If you announce your retirement party and it's still isn't done, then we got a problem. CJ?
Um, I missed the behold, this is the first I've ever seen, I'm not a fan of houses in people's backyards at all, so, but I didn't see the first iteration of it, so, but I'd be interested to see how close it was to the back view of the house.
Just so you, I don't know if the, the chairman has it, but we were, we were, we were probably a solid 15, 20 feet further to the right, at least. I would say our buil- our back of our building was close to lining up with the back of the ward building, you follow what I'm saying? And the reason why we did that was for grading purposes, so we didn't need this retaining wall. Um, but we're okay with the retaining wall, we can move it, and I think we can find a happy medium here.
Um, may I?
Yeah.
It may be helpful, too, for the board to understand, like, where, I know you have a plan showing where the clearing limits are, but like using a Google image, an aerial image to show where like the existing tree stand is in between these two properties.
We have ortho imagery.
Oh, is it already in?
Yeah, there's ortho in the last sheet, yeah.
In the ARB or the site plan?
It's on this one, on, on the site plan sheets, yeah.
Are the clearing limits notated on that?
Not on, not on that, I could place them on there.
Well, that's what I mean, it's just to show what would remain, you know, after construction.
So here you go.
Yeah, so what we've done with um, other applicants before that are in heavily wooded sites is we just had them draw a box around your limits of disturbance.
Yeah, that's easy, that's easy to do.
So I guess you would show two boxes, right, one you would show where it stays if the house was to stay where it is right now, and then one if you were to shift to the.
Yeah, I could do that as well.
The right.
I can show you the footprint as it sits right now, and I could show you the footprint moved over the five to eight, is that what you're asking me to do?
You could actually drop the house in there though, can't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, in order, I don't wanna go back, but I'm going back, in order for you to do the work on the drainage ditch to clean that out, are you gonna have to clean it, clear any land out to get a machine back there to do the work?
I don't think so, uh, I'll, I'll check that in the field to confirm, uh, the drainage ditch has to be open, because it's a drainage ditch.
Right, but I, you know, you gotta get an excavator or a backhoe back there, we don't wanna say you gotta clear a 16 foot path to go in.
I, I, I thought about that actually before coming to the meeting, um, I, I can double check it, I believe, I mean, the excavator probably needs a mm, six foot width. My thought was this thing would actually straddle.
Yeah, okay.
The ditch.
That's, yeah.
And as it moved downhill, it would just take the bucket and just kinda, that was my, that was in my mind's eye how it might work.
Yeah, we just don't wanna make, you know, we're gonna say you gotta clean the ditch out, and all of a sudden you say, well, we gotta clean another 12 feet of trees out.
Yeah, I mean.
I think actually that's a really good point, because one of the things that we talked about previously, and actually I had emailed the applicant about it after the last appearance, is that for this application, you are also the Environmental Conservation Commission, you have very few parcels that have been untouched, this one is untouched. And one of the provisions says that prior to the issuance of a building permit, and what we said was from a practical standpoint, this should be accomplished now, so they don't go and then come back, is that the commission shall designate on a given lot the trees to be retained by the developer, which designation shall be based on the proposed location of the house, driveway, septic, and other accessory uses and structures, it being understood that the area, what area the commission designates um, shall not designate for preservation. So basically where the house is, you're saying there's no preservation, the driveway, et cetera, so if you're talking about having to clear trees for the drainage ditch, you might have to specify, like, those trees for the drainage ditch maybe be retained, but do it by hand instead of a machine.
Right.
Whatever, something like that.
With the proximity of the ward house, if there's a 30 foot oak back there, that's.
Like, yeah.
No shading on that property, we don't want them to go in and take it out to clean the, to clean the drainage ditch out either.
So it might be important in that area to kinda show where the larger trees are at this point, so that you don't have to come back after you get approval. Unless you wanna join us again before retirement.
Well, um.
Don't, I thought there was a thing in the.
I, I, I appreciate everybody's concern, and I, and I, and I, and I don't, um, and I say this respectfully, uh, I don't wanna disregard what you're saying, but I don't wanna go down a rabbit hole either with this. Um, so my thought is, let me, let me check, let me check and see if that ditch is sized properly, that might be a good first step. Um, if it's sized properly, then we can hand clean the ditch if we needed to, and we wouldn't need to take anything down. Um, I can go out there and check and see if there's appropriate width, to see if there's anything that needs to be taken down. I just wanna avoid doing a tree survey at this point, if I, if I can avoid it, and I'm just being.
Specifically a tree survey, I was just, yeah, basically, if you go out there and you take a look and you see a 30 foot in diameter oak, honestly, you should probably note that on the plan, and I'm gonna tell you not to.
Gotcha, okay.
If you see something that's that significant, I think it's gonna be important for this board, because you do want that ditch maintained for those residents to really address that, and, and for the potential new homeowner as well. They're not gonna wanna buy this lot thinking there's this gorgeous sycamore, and then they buy it and it's not, yeah.
Well, that's something you could bring back to us when you come back.
I think that's what he's, what he, Mike's agreeing to do, when he gets, when he sends one of his guys out there.
I mean, best, best case, you could straddle the ditch.
You should do it now.
I, I think that, I, I, I mean, I, I've got, I've got.
Well, you could put a smaller machine in there, too.
Correct, it's a mini, it's a mini excavator is what we would be dealing with, but I mean, I, I, I don't wanna, I, I, it's been a while, I, I gotta go check it. Um, I couldn't.
Response.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you fully off the top of my head that the full thing is clear and an excavator can access it without taking.
That's the case, too, there may be no trees in there.
Yeah.
Right, it may be a moot point, but.
But in my, in my mind, I feel like there wasn't, but I gotta check it.
Alright.
This is where we need the Village Woodbury drone. We could send it up over the site, and we could, we could take.
During a meeting, we could do it.
We could watch it, and just, we could fly it out there.
You guys would be fighting on who controls the drone now, I'm sure.
We turned the camera off before it was, when it was over somebody else's property, okay?
So with the ban restriction, if anything's done.
The northern, the northern Longhorn Bat?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we couldn't do anything disturbing the environment, um, right?
Well, he can't do anything right now because we're still in a water moratorium, so.
That's true.
That's, well, we have, we're not in a sewer moratorium, we're just in a water moratorium right now.
Yeah, but we're not a moratorium.
That's not a moratorium for it, yeah.
Something to a moratorium, and if they want to apply to the village board, they certainly can do so. I did circulate a draft resolution, um, knowing that they were subject to this, just to kinda get everybody's minds. Um, there will have to be obviously some amendments to that, based on the discussions tonight and based on your site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not gonna, I don't think we should take action, because.
Well, you can't take that.
Action anyway, well, right, because of the moratorium, anyway.
That's why I just wanted to say, I remind everybody.
But, if I could ask the board, um, I haven't really gone to the village yet, cause I don't really know if the board is interested in moving this towards an approval situation. Now, I'm not asking you to vote or say anything tonight, but I feel like we've gotten as close as we've gotten in four years on this, and it seems like it's heading in the right direction if I can respond to these last concerns.
I guess really what our decision's left is, we want to move the house a little bit more, correct?
Yeah, the, some changes to the retaining wall, so if it's not a big monolithic blob of concrete, if it can be done.
I don't think there's much else left to move.
I know there's engineering.
Well, no, but let, let me just be clear on that, if, if I move the house between five and eight feet to the right, the retaining wall height will shrink a little bit, but it's still gonna be a pretty big single wall, I don't wanna.
Right, but like at the shops in Woodbury, it, it's a huge concrete retaining wall, but they dyed it and stamped it, and.
That's not the issue, yeah, we can certainly, but the height's still gonna, it's like, I'm not, I don't wanna misrepresent the height.
We're trying to make it.
Aesthetically nice.
Yes.
Aesthetically pleasing as possible, as you can with concrete, I mean.
Yeah, now with forms nowadays, that's an easy thing to do, so you, we, we can, we can certainly take care of the visual impact from a, from what it looks like, but I can't reduce the height of it anymore than it is.
Part of the next mission maybe would be different stamp patterns and, and tints, colors, just to uh, see.
That's what we've, that we did that with the other applicant, too, with the, I guess they gave us like three or four different.
Yeah, pick out some stamps.
Some looked, looked like.
And the tinting, I think.
Some looked like stone, like boulders, some looked like blocks.
Uh, I, I think a stone pattern here, that, that'd be my opinion.
Yeah, three, you know, two or three.
Yeah.
Different patterns, tint colors, and uh.
Now, when you do the render, I'm just curious, when you, if you do, shift to the left, are you able to redo the rendering to show this rendering, to show what the house is gonna look shifted?
I would, I would imagine I would, that would be a requirement, so yeah, I was prepared to do that, yeah.
There's a barrier with this rendering, too, because from your drawings, the driveway comes through the back of the stone wall. And here, it looks like it's well separated.
That's cause it's going in and it go, and turning into the garages.
Yeah, if you look at my driveway on the site plan, it's kinda a little windy. It's got like an S shape to it. I mean, keep in mind, I'm taking a photo at ground level, and it's a rendering, I'm trying my best to make a representation here.
Right, but you're not, you're not planning on bringing the driveway all the way over here, I was gonna say this width here, until it gets to where the garage is, right?
No, I mean, if anything, the driveway would have to shift a little bit with the house to the right, yeah, yeah, so it would, if you can scroll down, it might actually help straighten the driveway out a little bit.
Okay, I got you, this curve.
It should help straighten the driveway out a little bit, yeah.
The part I was talking about where it comes into the road, there's a stone wall there.
This right here?
There's, yeah, I think.
And it looks like the driveway goes through the back of the stone wall.
Yeah, and I, I put a note, a small portion of the existing rock wall will need to be removed, yeah.
So they would have to remove up to whatever that boulder is or something like that, just.
But it's in the village's right of way, so certainly should.
Be there in, should be there anyway, but it's probably been there for a hundred years, so.
It's probably an old property boundary.
Yeah, I would imagine if you would pull an old map, this is Sally's stone wall, 62 feet from the oak tree. I don't joke, when you go, we'd look, that's on a.
Oh, they really like that?
Yes, absolutely. Alright, other questions, concerns from the board? Appearance, color, look, all that other fun stuff?
I'm okay with everything.
Speak now, or?
No, I just, again, I like to see the rendering from the rear as well.
The rendering from where?
The rear.
The house is gonna look like?
Yeah, to see the rear of the house compared to where it's gonna look, what the people, what it's gonna look at in front of them.
But there's nobody behind us at all.
No, not behind you, but what?
I think you want to see looking down towards the other house.
Yeah, what are you gonna see at the other house?
Oh, so rendering standing in the rear of the house, looking towards the blue house here?
Yeah.
Uh, uh.
I just wanna see how intrusive it is, actually is, it could help, actually.
Not sure I understand, I like, as if I'm standing in the house, looking out the window, looking down?
This house is considerably taller, and it's behind the other house, so I don't know what the view is, you know, if there's, there's people in front of a pool or something, you can be looking right down and into the pool. Yeah, I, it's, I just don't know what you're looking at. It's hard to tell in this drawing.
Is that a rendering, or is that someone standing where the, where the corner of the property is with the camera and taking a picture, looking? of the property is with the camera and taking a picture looking back towards the blue house?
That's fine, either way, yeah.
I mean, all I could do is provide a photo from that elevation looking down.
Correct.
I think that's what...
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a rendering, it would just simply be a photo.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, the corner of the house.
Anything.
I think it will help too when that aerial image shows the clearing boundary and how much, how many trees are being preserved in between the two homes, and then also for the board to consider whether or not you wanna supplement the plantings between the two homes as well.
Yeah, additional, uh, privacy.
Correct. A buffer, right.
Yeah, we'd have to get them on something like that.
Because it, the way it's put here, I don't, can't tell how many trees are in the way of the view or...
Yeah, and then once we see that picture, if we need them to put additional planting, then we can require them to do that.
Yeah, correct.
We've done it on other applications before where the houses kind of look at each other. Anything else for the applicant? No? Anything else for us?
I think that's it for me tonight. Uh, is it, is it, is it, should I make one more appearance before this board before I consider going to the village board? I mean, I just... I've, I've been holding off...
I don't know.
It's really, it, the, the overall water and sewer is not gonna change, so...
Yeah.
To get on an agenda, I would try to get on an agenda with the village, I don't know what their backlog is.
Okay, I'll do that. I've taken enough time tonight.
Thank you for...
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. ARB 242 Ridge Road Garage Conversion Review and Discuss Documents Submitted for ARB and Ridge Preservation for Proposed Garage Converting to a Living Space Said Property Located 242 Ridge Road in Highland Mills and is Known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Map Section 206 Block 1 Lot 8. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Eric Osborne, I'm an architect, and, 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 and I represent the owner. And, um, uh, so, so, uh, so, uh, just about a year ago, he, okay, the owner finished off his garage without a permit, and he got caught. Uh, he went to court in March of this year, contacted me right after and said he had to come to this board, uh, because it's in the ridge, uh, it's in the ridge zone. Uh, so, so we filed for a permit, and, uh, uh, there were a couple comments, um, so, so I was at the house, okay, went to the house yesterday, it's kinda late, and, uh, your, your, uh, your consultant wanted to see homes, homes within 300 feet, sizes and whatnot. Also, what's the gross area of this house? And I, I made two copies. It's kinda late.
Did you submit these with the building department yet or no?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
So, so I may have to come back next month.
Yeah, because we can't take documents at night 'cause we don't have a chance, nobody has a chance to look them over. But this is, this is what it's built like right now, right? The house with the, this is the garage that was finished?
Yeah, it's all done.
Just finished, not added on, correct?
This was an existing garage that they turned in?
It was an existing garage, right.
Natalie?
Yes, um, so forgive me when I talk about it like it's a proposed action because that is how the board is looking at this, um, but we know that it's been completed. So again, the proposal was to convert the existing garage to a living space, it's now a living room. Um, we've asked the applicant to provide a plot plan with a bulk table demonstrating that the location of the home and the driveway comply with the criteria of the code, again, understanding that the existing footprint hasn't changed, um, that's still something that's required by the code for you to review. The applicant has already indicated that the home was not expanded, so it remained within the footprint of what was existing. Uh, the ARB form should be updated to include the gross floor, floor area of the home. Information on comparison homes within 300 feet of the property should be provided, and that's typical of the ARB code. Under Ridge Preservation, the applicant should demonstrate whether or not the home is visible from the view corridor. The nearest view corridor is Ridge Road. The code requires the use of earth-tone neutral colors that blend into the natural environment. We recommend that you review the photographs provided and consider whether the application complies. It looks like the applicant matched the existing siding, um, so there are provisions in your code where you can waive if it's not natural in your opinion, um, that that would be acceptable, so that's something for the board to consider. Uh, the projected water and sewer demand form should indicate that no new bedrooms are proposed, just so that that could be executed with the water and sewer department. Um, and otherwise, a public hearing should be waived or scheduled per your discretion under the code, and we defer to Kelly on seeker recommendations. That's it.
There was no plumbing added, was there?
No.
Did the house not have a living room before?
It had one before.
And what did the living, an existing living room become?
Uh, it's still a living room, yeah.
So we have two living rooms.
One's, one's a little small. Actually, the, the, the original living room is now a dining room. Okay, it's a religious home, so...
I'm just trying to see if, you know, you know, talking about not adding another bedroom, but did the existing living room become a bedroom and this become the living room? That's what I'm asking.
Sorry, I'm trying to get a...
Water purposes.
It's important as to whether or not it became a bedroom because of the water moratorium.
No, no, it didn't become a bedroom. It's...
Was there, is there a closet?
I was just asking.
There's no closet in this room?
Is there a closet in the other living room?
No.
Okay.
No, no, it was a plan, there is, okay, this area here, this wall was removed, so come doors, okay, and these are existing stairs going down to the basement. So, uh, it's open to this existing room, which is the living room. So this, uh, so it's an expanded living room. All they did is remove the garage doors, you add two windows here and there, finish it off, it's a later, lighting, plumbing, closets.
The bo, the board could ask to see a footprint of the, or the, a layout, essentially, a floor plan of the existing home to confirm where those changes occurred. Well, it's just a partial floor plan, so it would show the rest of the home, you know, where the existing living room is and the other features of the home, the kitchen, where the bedrooms are, so you can see what the layout...
Yeah, I just, that was just a question I asked, what happened to the original living room? Other than that, I'm fine.
Yeah, I mean...
Of course, Image Mate's down right now, keeps giving me...
We prefer to ask permission instead of forgiveness, which seems to be the case in this town law, but...
Yeah, neither here nor there. All right. So other than what the requirements are under the code that has to be submitted, anybody have any other questions or concerns for the...
No.
No.
So in terms of seeker, this is a type-two action, so the board can make a motion to declare it a type-two?
So I will offer a motion to declare this as a type-two on the secret?
A second.
Question? All in favor? All right.
And then the board, the public hearing is in your discretion, so you should discuss whether or not, uh, you'd like to hold a public hearing on that.
I believe we could waive it.
I would think it's in the public's best interest to waive the public hearing, so I will offer a motion for...
I will second.
Any questions? All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Um, do we wanna have counsel pending, uh, information?
Pending submission, yeah.
Draft a resolution of approval?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll offer a motion and have counsel draft a resolution of approval pending the applicant's submission.
Second.
Second, question? All in favor?
Bye.
Okay.
That's it, I think.
Yeah, so you understand that you're making another submission to address the comments that are in Natalie's memo?
Right, right, you want me to, uh, how you want to show the, uh, show the floor plans?
I think the board actually didn't seem to require that, so no, I don't think you have to do that. I think, um, the information that you submitted tonight with the information on surrounding properties, the board can consider that, um...
Has to be resubmitted, right.
With the building department, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, and as long as you address the comments in our memo, you should be okay.
So, so we need to come back here next month?
You need an approval, right? So the board has authorized counsel to draft a resolution of approval, so we'll review the materials you submit, and if all goes well, you should have an approval at the next meeting.
Great.
I hope that's okay.
All right, thank you for your time.
Just when you do the comparisons, typically we get them in a tabula format that...
Oh yeah, I saw the, uh...
Yeah, so...
A lot nicer than I did the last minute, right?
So that's what we'd be, we'd be looking for, okay?
Yeah, okay.
All right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I presume Mr. Barshaw is here for the shul, right? Someone wanna, someone wanna grab him? 24 Southfield Falls Congregation, Jem, not gonna even try. How do, how do I say that? Congregation Jemels?
Uh, Gamelos.
How is that?
Gamelos.
Gamelos.
R G.
There you go, I was close, not even close. Review and discuss materials submitted for site plan, special permit, ARB, and Ridge Preservation for Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling to Proposed Shul with Mikvah. Said property is in the senior housing section of Woodbury Villas located at 24 Southfield Falls in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map Section 255 Block 1 Lot 76. Welcome.
Good evening, good to be here, everybody. Stephen Barshav, S. Barshav Law for the applicant. Uh, I looked through Natalie's memo, and I think that the threshold questions are zoning questions, so I'm here to address those since I think that is what needs to be addressed first. So, uh, I went back and I looked at the approval resolution for Woodbury Villas, and I have it with me, and there's a couple of excerpts, uh, from this that I would like to, uh, bring to your attention. So, uh, this project to begin with, uh, was developed with a cluster development overlay, as I understand it, that's a cluster subdivision, and a senior housing overlay. Now, I wanna stress the word overlay because to my knowledge, the underlying R1A zoning was never eliminated, but there was a senior housing overlay that was put on top of it in this area. When I looked at the, uh, resolution document, this was confirmed in the section, this is on page two, and I can give you copies of this, where it says the property affected by this resolution is in the R1A zoning district of the town of Woodbury and has been designated acceptable for development under the CCDOD by the Woodbury Town Board. The portion of the project devoted to senior housing is also in the SH Senior Housing Overlay District. Now, my understanding of an overlay district is that it does not supplant the underlying zoning, is that it is an overlay, that it's on top of the existing zoning. Certainly, if you are developing the property for senior housing, you would comply with the senior housing overlay. What is being sought here is to not have senior housing, but to have this developed as a shul, and my belief is, is that because of that, the R1A zoning would apply. And the R1A zoning allows a place of worship as a specially permitted use, and it also allows this board, as I'm sure you're aware, to waive any of the bulk requirements that are applicable in the event that it's necessary for, uh, religious purposes. This shul, as I have been told and as I believe you are aware, would only be utilized on Shabbos on Saturdays, and so everybody would be walking there by definition inherently, and so the need for the typical amount of parking is not there because of the limited amount of use. And that is something, by the way, that can be stipulated in the application, it's not something that you would order, but we would represent so that you could then say on that basis, this is what is happening. Um, and I believe that most of the other, uh, development standards are met by the existing building, the existing building's footprint would not be changed as I understand it. Um, so that's how I approached the zoning on this and have no idea if this fits.
I could've saved you five minutes, uh, we're, we're not arguing this, that it should be permitted use here.
Okay, well, listen, I don't mind the five minutes, I'd rather have it be of record that we're all in agreement.
They do still need to discuss potential waivers for lot area and lot width. Also, the, uh, lot coverage wasn't shown on the plans, so...
I'm gonna let, uh, our engineer speak to those details in a second, or should I mean whoever wants to do it, but I just wanted to, uh, ask Kelly one question, which is, I noted in, uh, in the comments that the, that Natalie's comments were predicated on there not being bulk standards. So I think what we're all saying is that the bulk standards of R1A would apply, and I thought we're in compliance with those bulk standards or not exactly?
No, so the...
Okay, we'll, we'll get to...
Lot area requires 20,000 square feet, um, the subdivision plat required 10,000 square feet.
Right.
The property has 9583.
Okay, so then there would need to be a, uh, for that purpose, there would need to be, right? And since it's the existing lot, obviously there's nothing we can do about it, so yes, I would say we would need to get the waiver for that.
And then the lot width requires 125 feet, but the plans didn't provide a bulk for that dimension?
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll, we'll flesh that out for you, but our approach is going to be that because it's an existing property and, uh, we're just simply looking to take an existing property and, uh, it, its lot size and configuration is what it is, that we would be asking the board to waive any requirements that are not met and not make us go to the ZDA.
Your time's up, you went to the whistle, your time's up.
Okay, I'm done. I love that. If only that happened in court on the, for the opposition.
Do you know what I missed is an actual, and I will get to everybody's report, is um, a narrative.
Yeah, so...
Hold, hold on.
I can actually talk a little louder than this. One, one thing that was missing from the submission was a narrative. Sorry, is that a little bit better? A narrative was missing, and when you do that narrative, I just wanna make sure that we're clear that the waivers that you're requesting, I understand it's existing lot area thing, but it does need to be related to the substantial burden for the shul.
Sure.
Which, I know you know, but I'm saying loudly and into the microphone, some more here.
Yeah, no, and I'm glad you're bringing it up, Kelly, 'cause yes, we will do that for sure. We'll do that, we'll address all of the bulk standards, request the waivers, and link it back to the use.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh, other questions or...
Natalie?
Oh, you want me to go, okay. Alright.
You are.
Okay, so, you know, just kind of skipping down. There will be some revisions to the parking calculations. A waiver will be requested for the parking. Again, that should be tied to the substantial burden, although there is a provision in your code that allows the planning board to consider a reduction by 25%, where use will generate parking needs less than the zoning requires, so that's something for the applicant to consider. The plan will need to provide at least one handicap stall. We had comments on the water and sewer demand calculations. They should include estimates for employees and also filling and refilling the mikvah with public water. In doing so, the plan should be revised to show seating for the shul areas, locations that storage of rainwater are proposed, along with the respective volume of the holding tanks, as well as the volume of the mikvah pools, so that we can confirm the calculations are correct. Regarding sewers, for similar applications, the planning board has required the property owner to implement certain restrictions on disposal of wastes within the sanitary sewer system to avoid clogs. Some of the conditions were placing signage in appropriate language, languages in the bathroom stalls to, you know, restrict disposal of sanitary napkins and things like that. So that should be carried to this application. The application is exempt from preparation of a SWIP, but due to the increase in impervious area and the parking lots proposed, you've seen this also with a similar application. The applicant should show the existing drainage infrastructure and the roadway, and then if needed, provide additional facilities to manage the stormwater runoff from the property. The plans note that there, the presence of a sump pit. The applicant should confirm the purpose of this, and the discharge point should be shown on the plans. There are absolutely no, absolutely no, no sump connections should be connected to sanitary sewer facilities. They are prohibited, which is what I'm trying to get to. The plan should clearly show the site improvements proposed for pedestrian accessibility. Grading, utility lines, landscaping, and lighting plans should be provided at the appropriate time. If signs are proposed, details should be provided. The app, oh, you've already confirmed, actually, we wanted confirmation that the shul would only operate on Saturday, not even holidays or anything like that, just Saturdays.
I'll double check on that, but that's a fair question, Natalie will find, we'll clarify that in the narrative.
Right, exactly.
Whatever, I can tell you one thing, whatever days that it would be operating would only be on days when people would be walking, that I can say for sure. Now, whether that's only Shabbos and it's also holidays, I'll confirm that and put that in the narrative.
Sure. Refuse location should be identified on the plan. A R B and ridge preservation review is required. The applicant should provide materials for the board to consider the code criteria. A public hearing is required at the appropriate time. And I think the rest of our comments really are just for the applicant to clarify on future plan submissions. And I don't need to take any more of the board's time unless you have any questions.
No, I'm guessing, being Larry Hartman actually gave us a great education on mikvahs in that last time he was here. So I don't see anything in site plan, and I know you kind of brought it up for the rainwater collection and the storage tanks in the building, the whole basement's used. So what's the plan, because?
That's beyond this lawyer's capacity, that I will turn over to others.
We went through this with Mr. Hartman, and I'm not trying to throw Mr. Hartman under the bus. He just happened to give us a nice education. So when this was done in another facility, one of the requirements was there was no interconnect between the mikvah and the public water system. So, because our, this board's understanding was it needs to be naturally occurring water.
Catch a question again?
The mikvah has to be natural, when it has to be filled and refilled, has to be naturally occurring rainwater. It can't be...
No, it just, for one time, they have one pool from the rainwater.
Okay.
And this, they're not using it, just in one, in a tub. And then the other pool is being used, and this is one-time fill-in, and then just with the filter system, get cleansed.
I know, but if it has to be drained out for any reason, or topped off, is that coming from public water supply?
No, they have to wait again for what the pool that they are using.
Either one.
Even one.
Either one going to be connected to public water supply.
Yes, one will be connected.
Then you just need to, you gotta have to go for a whole backflow submission and...
Yeah, no, that's not how they were explained.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That might...
And that's why the question, that's why I'm asking the question, because we had another explanation given to us.
I understand your question, I will get a clarification for you. I appreciate your question, and we'll get that clarification, it'll go into the narrative. Because I understand what your dichotomy is, I got it.
I mean, that may end up having to be something that, it isn't connected to public water supply. They may have to fill that from a storage company.
Well, yeah, just where's...
Right, you just need to know what it is and under what circumstances, completely understand.
You can totally get it. You can require the applicant to put in a backflow preventer on the property, on the water service line, so that you can know, so that protects the water supply.
Right, but it drives up how much water the site's gonna be using.
Well, yeah, well, that's...
Which, right now, is a very big...
Correct, and the moratorium is gonna take care of that, rise up now. But as far as sanitary and worrying about what's filling, what's not filling, and connected to public water supply, just get them on a backflow preventer in the building, with proper cross connection control, application through to the Department of Health and approved by the Water Department.
Right, but when we...
That's what saves that.
We had another shul in front of us when, actually, Maria Hunter was on the board on Millville Lane, where they had to put a rainwater garden in for a collection and storage of the water.
Right, if you needed that natural source.
Right, and that's what this board is trying to flush out.
Yep, and I understand the purpose of the question, I got it, especially given the moratorium.
So I think we'll get the information from the applicant, and then we'll have to craft appropriate conditions. And like I said, to start, if it is, I mean, they're subject to the moratorium unless they can prove that there's no increase in the use of water. But if it's something where it could potentially, I don't know how it works, he'll explain it. We'll have to craft an appropriate condition.
Oh, being that we're adding bedrooms, there's gonna be an increased water supply anyway, correct?
No, it's based on bedrooms.
Bedrooms.
However...
But there's no bedrooms, so there's no water use.
Oh, but there's a storage room with a closet.
Yeah, I think...
Right, there's really different calculations.
So one of my questions was, is anybody gonna be residing in the shul? Because sometimes we've had somebody living there, and then it's also a shul.
No.
Can I keep going?
No, keep going, it's fine.
There is note 11 on Sheet 1, what does that say?
Which, the site plan Sheet 1 or the A R B Sheet 1?
It should be site plan Sheet 1.
Oh, yeah, okay, hold on, hold on. Mr. Barshav used the smallest font possible.
It said, lots with common ownership may be graded out as necessary to achieve proper grading. Okay, because I didn't understand what, I didn't know if they were lots that were in common ownership that might be graded out as part of this application, but if it's a carryover, maybe that can just be cleaned up.
This was just a very rough concept plan submittal. I recognize that there's revisions that need to be made, but it's my first, the reason for the submittal was, number one, iron out the zoning. And so I'll take care of all the comments on Natalie's letter, make sure the plans are cleaned up and appropriate notes are removed. That was probably a leftover, I couldn't tell you from what project, but it was a leftover note from another project.
And you guys thought I didn't read the notes? There was a storage room that has a closet under your code and your building inspector's determination. That's a bedroom, so I'll talk to him about that. The use isn't proposed as a residence at all, but I want to make sure we have something clear and in the record. And then on the elevations, which page are the elevations, Mike?
Before we skip to the elevation, and I don't want to steal Phil's under, but being it's going to only be a, right now, we're presuming it's only gonna be a high holy day shul, so there'll be no driving. Do we actually need the parking?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Increase the impervious, there's no need to increase the impervious service?
No, there probably isn't, I agree.
So that could be considered in the narrative?
Yes.
And why they could request that waiver and maybe land bank some, if that's possible, to keep the grass? And they might know more once they look at what the impervious, what the lot coverage is.
May facilitate a rain garden.
Hey, fill the mikvah!
Just thinking.
I like where your head's at.
I know.
Sorry, Kelly, I just, I didn't want to, I didn't want to flip back and forth between plans and then...
Nope, that's fine. It's wherever the elevation is. Not that one. Down a little, that, right there. What is that box between the windows? Because it looks like a placeholder for a sign?
No.
Otherwise, it's kind of just a weird lines.
If you can go to the floor plans.
I think if I could give everybody a mouse and everybody could just kind of scroll on their own. What could go wrong there?
Oh, that'd be nice.
Okay, so this is for the Torah safe.
Oh, the Torah safe, okay.
Yes, so we're doing like a bump out.
Oh, so it was a bump out?
This is the bump out, so...
Okay, because it just, it looked, I couldn't tell.
So it was originally designed for a fireplace, but it was designed for a house. When they moved in, they utilized this area for the Torah safe.
Okay. Thank you.
That makes sense now. I may have stolen your thunder, sorry.
Some of my comments may not apply anymore, but I had four comments. The number one was the narrative. Provided narrative of proposed services, overall operations of the shul and the mikvah, including description of expected occupancy, peak hours of operation, any special events. So in writing, that'll answer a lot of the questions.
Yep.
Under Item 8A in the E A F, provided description of pedestrian accommodations for accessing the site, additional details on any traffic expected to be generated. You've answered that, as well as any parking, projected parking provisions, and demand estimate should be provided. So, again, that was in relationship to the roadway, the traffic circle here, you know, and some of these locations where with the shuls, we have people parking on the street, and emergency access becomes very critical, especially because the south here is another cul-de-sac which would be isolated if there was any blockage there. Then identify site distances at the driveways, but the driveways may be modified or one of them may be eliminated here. And then clearly show on the plans any proposed sidewalks or crosswalks, signing, or other proposed improvements. So like those crosswalks that are shown there, those are proposed, they're not existing today. There is no existing sidewalk on the north side opposite this property. It's probably planned when that roadway gets extended, but clearly point out what's existing, what's proposed, what will go in now.
And how the pedestrians are gonna get there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the sidewalk network is only on the site side of Southfields, and then it connects around the traffic circle there, so...
Okay.
That's it.
Got it.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Sorry? Absolutely, I have a copy here too, you can take this.
And maybe, I mean, how are we gonna handle ADA compliance? I see there's a concrete walk-in steps. I know it's a preliminary plan, but is, are we gonna have rain?
We'll have to address that, yeah.
You're gonna address that on the next submission?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Not really, till we get the next submission.
Right, so I'd imagine this gravel drive could potentially go away then, too.
Yeah, a lot of blockage built away. Driving there.
I know, it's the first, it's the first time in front of us, and this is why just the narrative is so helpful when these, when these applications come in, it just eliminates so many of these questions.
Absolutely, we'll get that for you for next time.
Any other feedback, concerns? No?
No, I just want to make it clear, this is gonna be non-resident.
Correct.
Okay.
I will make a motion to make this, type this as an unlisted action under SECR and declare our intent to service lead agency.
Second.
Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody, any other feedback from? No?
But thank you for entertaining. All good.
Good, good, alright, so...
Okay. Can we set this to be back in, I think, October, is that realistic?
October's probably realistic.
Yeah, yeah, the October meeting?
September's definitely not happening.
I don't think from our end either, but I think October would work, I think.
Again, it's all gonna depend when you get everything back into us, so...
Okay, fair enough. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Phil, if you want, oh no, you have to do the, you don't have anything for the three-lash subdivision, do you? You wanna?
I'll stick around, I want to talk to you about...
Okay, I know, I just don't want you to have to waste your time.
Thank you.
Alright, 75 Southfield Falls. Review and discuss materials submitted for A R B and Ridge Preservation for proposed addition to a single-family dwelling. Said property is located 75 Southfield Falls in Central Valley, is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 255, Block 4, Lot 1. Good evening. I got ahead of myself and pulled up the wrong application before. I need, I need, I need my own assistant is what I need.
Hi, my name is Shloimi Gelb from Hartman Design to present this project on behalf of the applicant. So basically, what we're doing here is, we're doing a right side. Open it up, a second. So we're doing an extension to the back of the house. The kitchen and dining room will be extended, and a new family room and a study on the left side of the house, and a mud entry. The mud entry is not an extension, just a part of the existing garage. And then we're doing a small entry in the front. And as shown on the site plan, that is also complies with the zoning. And we have submitted the materials and the comparison to the other houses. However, we had received a comment letter before the last meeting, and we have prepared every, and the last meeting was pushed off, so we have prepared a new application, a new submittal to address all these comments. Not sure if the board have received this, we have to bring it to the building department. Does this basically?
Yeah, your August 5th, right, August 7th, I'm thinking?
Yes, the new one is August 5th, yes. And we have also submitted a narrative, how we addressed all the comments from the letter.
Questions for the applicant before we go to Natalie? Natalie?
Sure, so as Mr. Gelb already indicated, the applicant's proposing additions to the front and the rear of the home. They're also proposing to demolish an existing deck and construct a new deck. Mr. Gelb received our comment letter for the July meeting. They did submit revised materials. We haven't issued a revised memo, but I did look at the materials, so I'm prepared to kind of discuss the changes with you, if you're okay with that.
That's fine, go ahead.
So the applicant provided the coverage and height calculations on the plan. They're complying, so that resolves some of the earlier comments in our memo. They did provide additional photos of comparison homes within 300 feet of the property, but they did not provide information on the building footprint and gross floor area of those homes, so that should be provided in a tabular format like you are used to seeing. In the new submission, the applicant confirmed their intent to match the existing siding, except for the front of the home where white is proposed. The applicant provided a photo from Route 32 at the entrance to Shu'at Place depicting a leaf on condition, and this is associated with the Ridge Preservation Review, and whether or not the home would be visible. We've recommended that the applicant provide, or we are recommending, that the applicant provide a photo from Route 32, but at the schools. It seems to me that there's more visibility from that section of Route 32 looking up towards the development than there is along other areas of Route 32, so that should be where, in my opinion, where that confirmation of visibility is provided.
And just a, that's normally where those pictures come from anyways.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Standard practice of the board.
Sure. Again, so the applicant did confirm that they are gonna use that white vertical siding. It's almost like an accent on the home where the addition is proposed on the right, and then in the... But, the bump out, yeah.
I mean, bump out, I'm sorry.
So again, technically, under your Ridge Preservation criteria, white is not an acceptable color, but that can be waived if the home is not visible from the view corridor at the discretion of the board. Yes, the applicant also confirmed that the retaining walls on the property were built with the home and that they're proposed to remain. You may wish to consider a condition of your action that would memorialize that, and at your discretion, a public hearing may be waived or scheduled, and we defer to counsel's direction on SECR. Kind of all we have left for the application, so, again, we didn't issue a revised memo, but those are our remaining comments, so if you can address them on a future submission, you know, we'll prepare our memo based on that.
I just want to ask one thing regarding the view corridor. From where did you think?
If you take the pictures from the schools, like the entrance to the schools facing where your home would be located on the hill, or not, yeah, the home.
Yeah, so it's on 32, in front of Central Valley, looking up towards Woodbury Junction.
Okay. We did, okay. Okay, and regarding the white siding, we have added to this submission, some of the neighboring houses, they have the same color. We suggest that the client to match it to the existing, but he wants to make this color, and, and, and we have a few houses around, as you can see on the submission, that also have this white color. But if it's not visible from the view corridor, it's anyway...